I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Ms. Jim Malone. I'm here on behalf of the Lackawanna County Deputy Sheriff's Association. It is understanding that the Commissioners are going to consider ratification of a collective bargaining agreement between the county and the Lackawanna County Deputy Sheriff's Association. We request that this decision be tabled until the next meeting. It is our understanding that the Commissioners believe they are ratifying an agreement that had been ratified by the association. This belief is in error. Specifically, while the association did hold a ratification vote on October 18th, this vote was not held in accordance with our bylaws. The meeting was scheduled by our Vice President and was announced by way of email on October 14th, with the meeting said to be on the 18th. However, our bylaws require five days' notice for special meetings, such as ratifying contracts. Thus, this ratification, which I note was not ever officially reported to the county, is not valid pursuant to our rules. Many members have voiced their objections over the improper vote. We plan on scheduling a proper ratification meeting in the near future. In order to allow us to correct our internal error, we respectfully ask that the county to table this ratification until we can do so. We believe that this matter is not urgent and hope that both parties can come to an agreement. If not, the association is prepared to take legal action if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I suggest we go into executive session to talk about the contract.
Okay. Everyone would please excuse us. We're going to talk about this.
Joanne.
It's the first reading for the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, an ordinance for Lackawanna County providing for the adoption of certain procedures related to the solicitation and award of public contracts within Lackawanna County, providing for certification requirements for public contractors, providing for certification requirements for subcontractors on public contracts, providing for public contract review, procedures, repealing inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances containing a savings clause, and providing for an effective date. Whereas Lackawanna County, third-class county situated within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, is duly empowered to enact certain laws needed to protect its proficiency and financial interests relating to major capital investments it makes in public work contracts, and to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its residents, whereas Lackawanna County has significant concerns regarding the challenges it faces in planning and executing public works, construction, and maintenance projects, especially those relating to its ability to ensure the use of qualified contractors and subcontractors and adequate numbers of skilled craft personnel who have industry-recognized training in their respective trades needed for public works, projects. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby adopts Resolution 22-0317, which identifies in detail the formidable changes, challenges summarized above, and resolves to address these challenges through appropriate procurement and contracting reforms set forth in this ordinance, and which is to incorporate the terms of this resolution in their entirety as material terms of this ordinance. And now therefore be it ordained and enacted, Lackawanna County hereby adopts the following contract qualification standards, procedures, and related requirements for public works contracts as specified herein in Section 1. Purpose: Lackawanna County recognizes that there is a need to ensure that all work on public construction and maintenance contracts is performed by responsible qualified firms that maintain capacity, expertise, personnel, and other qualifications and resources necessary to successfully perform such contracts in a timely, reliable, and cost-effective manner. To effectuate the purpose of selecting responsible contractors for these public contracts and to protect Lackawanna County's investments in such contracts, prospective contractors and subcontractors should be required to meet pre-established, clearly-defined minimum qualification standards regarding past project performance in terms of competency, safety, and law compliance, technical abilities, experience, and adequacy of resources. Further due: Further, due to the critical impact that skilled craft labor has on the execution of public works projects and the increasingly limited availability of such labor, it is necessary and to require contractors and subcontractors to participate in proven apprenticeship training programs as a condition of bidding to promote successful project delivery and help ensure future workforce development. Therefore, Lackawanna County shall require compliance with provisions of this ordinance by business entities seeking to provide services as specified herein. The requirements of this ordinance are intended to supply, not replace, existing contract or qualification standards or criteria currently required by Lackawanna County. However, in the event that this ordinance conflicts with any law, public policy, or contracting documents of Lackawanna County, the requirements of this ordinance shall prevail. Number two, responsible contract requirements. Am I going to read all eight pages, or you got something for me here?
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, let's keep on. I'll keep going to you. Okay? The ordinance shall apply to public works projects undertaken by Lackawanna County for construction, demolition, alteration, renovation, modernization, service, and maintenance of buildings, structures, or facilities valued at the present state minimum bid threshold at the time or more. All contractors and subcontractors of any tier that perform work on such projects, regardless of value of individual contract or subcontract packages, shall meet the requirements of this ordinance. B, all firms engaged in public works contracts subject to this ordinance, including general contractors, construction managers, other lead or prime contractors, and subcontractors at any level, shall be qualified responsible contracting firms that have sufficient capabilities in all respects to successfully perform contracts on which they are engaged, including the necessary experience, equipment, technical skills, and qualifications in organizational, financial, and personnel resources. Firms bidding or otherwise participating in public work contracts shall also be required to have satisfactory past performance record and a satisfactory record of law compliance, integrity, and business ethics. Contractor Responsibility Certifications as a condition of performing work on the public works contract. Item seven, Execution of the Final Contract. A contract subject to this ordinance shall not be executed until all requirements of this ordinance have been fulfilled and under contract contractor responsibility determination has been issued by Lackawanna County pursuant to Section 6. Or B, prior to the execution of the final contract under this section, Lackawanna County shall publicly post the notice of intent to award contractor and subcontractor responsibility certifications, subcontractor lists related, supporting documentation, and the contractor responsibility determination on a publicly available website for the inspection for a period of ten calendar days after the issuance of the contract responsibility determination. Section two, any and all other ordinances or parts of this ordinance is in violation or in conflict with the terms, conditions, and provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such a reconcilable conflict. Section three, the terms and conditions and provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and should any portion, part, or provision of this ordinance be found by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, unenforceable, or unconstitutional, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby declares its intent that the ordinances shall have been enacted without regard to the invalid, unenforceable, or unconstitutional portion, part, or provision of this ordinance. Anything else? Okay. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective thirty days after enactment.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers.
Right.
This does not require a vote at this point. That's the first reading. Ordinance 220319.
This is ordinance 284, authorize the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note series 2023 in the principal amount of $15 million, providing for the dated date interest rate plus due maturity date, payment, and place of payment in respect of the note, accepting the proposal for the purchase of the note naming the sinking fund depository, paying each, authorizing the proper officers of the county to execute and deliver the note, and certain other documents and certificates in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania set forth form of the note. Whereas County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania anticipates receiving taxes and other revenues during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, which taxes and other revenues are currently collected, and whereas the county has estimated on a monthly basis its expected taxes, revenues, and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and has determined that during a portion of such fiscal year, it will experience a cumulative cash flow deficit, as such phrase is defined in the regulations under Sections 103 and 148 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, whereas the county has determined to borrow monies for the purpose of funding, in part such cumulative cash flow deficit by issuing a note to be repaid from the anticipated taxes and revenues in accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Act 53, DACS, Chapters 80 through 82, as reenacted and amended. And whereas the county has received an acceptable proposal for the purchase of the tax and revenue anticipation note as herein after described as, and whereas required by Section 8126 of the Dead Act, officials of the county have heretofore made an estimate of the taxes and revenues to be received during such fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and by execution of the certificate with respect thereto dated the date certified to such estimate, now therefore be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County in lawful session duly assembled as follows. Section one, for the reasons and purposes recited above, the county hereby exercises its power and authority to borrow money and authorizes the issuance and sale of its tax and revenue anticipation note series of 2023 in the principal amount of $15 million in anticipation of the receipt of current taxes and revenues during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, such note to be issued, sold, and delivered as herein after provided. The chairman and any other commissioner of the board and chief of staff or the assistant chief of staff of the county are hereby authorized and directed jointly and severally in the name and on behalf of the county to prepare and file with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania a certified copy of this ordinance, a certificate setting forth the taxes and revenues to be collected in the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and a true copy of the accepted proposal for the purchase of the note, all as set forth in and required by Section 8128 of the Dead Section three, the note shall be executed by at least two members of the board and shall have the corporate seal of the county affixed thereto, and shall be duly attested by the chief of staff or assistant chief of staff of the county. The chairman and any other commissioner of the board and the chief of staff or assistant chief of staff of the county are each hereby authorized and directed jointly and severally to deliver the note to the herein after named purchaser upon the terms and conditions herein after provided to execute and deliver such other documents and instruments and to take such other action as may be necessary or appropriate to effect the issuance and sale of the note in accordance with the ordinance and the Dead Act. The execution and delivery of the note in accordance with Section nine hereof in this section five shall constitute conclusive proof of the approval of the final terms and provisions of the note by the county. Section six, Stevens &amp; Lee is hereby appointed bond counsel to the county in connection with the issuance and sale of the note. The controller, treasurer, and other proper official of the county is hereby authorized and directed to pay at or subsequent to the closing of the issuance of the note all costs and expenses incurred by or on behalf of the county or required to be paid by the county in connection with the issuance and delivery of the note to the purchasers. Section seven, the chairman and any other commissioner on the board, chief of staff, or assistant chief of staff of the county, and all other proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severally to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and sale of the note, including the execution and delivery of any and all additional documents and representations, declarations, depository agreements, debt service agreements, loan agreements, reimbursement agreements, security agreements, promissory notes, escrow agreements, assignments, financing statements, certificates, authorizations, contracts, engagement letters, agreements, insurance bidders, buy notes, and all other papers as may be necessary to effectuate any of the foregoing, and such execution and delivery shall be conclusive evidence of the authorization and approval thereof by the county. If any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect or impair any remaining provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this ordinance. It being the intent of the county that the remainder of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. The county reserves the right to amend this ordinance in any portion hereof from time to time, as it shall deem advisable in the best interest of the promotion of the purposes and intent of this purpose and effective administrative thereof. Section eight, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon approval of ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent with shall be and same expressly hereby are repealed. Anything else on that?
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. Again, no action is required today. It's just a first reading of the ordinance, so we'll move on. Resolution 220333.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 349238-350866, inclusive totaling $2,995,474.93. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $9,716,630.94, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220317.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is file number 220317, revising procurement standards for the public works construction. Be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is committed to addressing the challenges it faces relating to public works projects by enacting necessary and appropriate procurement legislation to protect its propriety and financial interests and create adequate safeguards to fully ensure the successful delivery of such projects to the greatest extent possible, whereas pursuant to 16 PACS 1802, state competitive bidding law requires that most public works contracts be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And whereas notwithstanding the importance of the responsible bidder requirement, there is very little limited guidance for defining the term responsible in relevant statutes, regulations, or case law, and therefore prudent procurement and contracting policy dictates that this term should be more specifically defined, and in doing so, available guidance regarding the general meaning of the responsible contractor term should be filed, which typically relates to the technical qualifications and other capabilities relating to a contractor's ability to successful delivery of public works projects. And whereas many states and local jurisdictions in the United States face critical contracting needs now and in the future, including those for public works and infrastructure projects that will require significant efforts to plan, manage, and oversee major capital investments in both the short and long term, see the President's Council of Economic Advisers, economic benefits, impacts, and expanded infrastructure investment, and whereas to protect the financial and proprietary interests of these projects and to offset performance risk inherent to public works contracting, Lackawanna County must utilize efficient procurement procedures to adequately protect and promote these interests, including clearly-defined pre-established evaluation criteria to address the unique challenges of capital construction and to result in the selection of qualified reputable contractors and subcontractors that are committed to Lackawanna County's goal of safe, timely, cost-effective project delivery. And whereas to establish efficient procurement procedures, Lackawanna County specifically seeks to require that its public works contracts are to be performed by qualified responsible contractors and subcontractors that meet essential performance criteria, including satisfactory records of past performance, including compliance with applicable laws and industry regulations, and adequate present performance capabilities, including contractor and subcontractor competency and availability of skilled craft personnel. And whereas due to the acute labor shortages in construction craft personnel leading construction industry groups, including trade associations representing project owners, such as Construction Users Roundtable, have repeatedly issued strong recommendations to parties purchasing construction services for large capital projects that they should adopt a prequalification standard that requires contractors and subcontractors to approve their participation in craft labor training programs in order to bid and perform on work projects, and whereas Lackawanna County finds that the apprenticeship training programs which are registered with and approved by the federal state agencies and maintained in accordance with regulation issued pursuant to the Fitzgerald Act provide the most reliable means for securing a reliable supply of qualified craft labor for capital projects, and further recognizes the essential levels of construction quality, safety, and cost efficiency on its public works projects will be better achieved by requiring the use of contractors and subcontractors that participate in bona fide apprenticeship programs with a proven record of graduating apprentices and providing effective skilled training in the construction labor industry. And whereas Lackawanna County wishes to revise its procurement standards for public works construction to address these findings and considerations, limit project delivery risks, and protect its financial and proprietary interests, and better ensure efficient procurement and successful delivery of these projects, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners held on December 7th, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is Chief Counsel, Mr. Frank Presario.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. As indicated within the resolution, this is part and parcel of ordinance 283, where we have the first reading today, and what this does essentially is establish minimum contracting standards and procurement guidelines for county-related and public works projects. The design of the responsible contracting ordinances and subsequent resolution is to ensure that we have the best, most qualified contractors for the jobs and for our public works projects, and that we're getting the best bang for our buck, both from the standpoint of the skilled labor doing the project, and as the resolution indicates, ultimately up to delivery of the final project back to the county.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve, 220317.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220320.
Approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Service Agreements for the fiscal year 22 through 23 with the following: Children's Aid Society of Mercer County, City Mission Living Stones Incorporated, Wayne County, and IJIS Institute, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Browning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The contracts for children's aid at City Mission, Wayne County are for foster care organizations to help us out when we remove children for cause. The professional service agreement is for the IJIS Institute to manage the stop grant. It's a federal grant to identify children that are at risk of potential violence or harm in the schools, and then coordinate a team effort to prevent from escalating and provide treatment and service. That's entirely federally funded. There are no county dollars involved in that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220321.
Approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Contract Amendments, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Contract Amendments for the fiscal year 22 through 23, with the Pennsylvania State University and the Catherine McCauley Center, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Mr. Browning.
This is a continuation of the Prosper Program, an evidence-based program provided by Penn State to help parents engage with their children. It's been shown to decrease drug abuse later on. We're not adjusting the amount of the contract just the way that it's invoiced. It was program-funded. Now we're asking that it be amended as a reimbursement structure, so they would provide us the cost of delivering that service, and it would also require them to provide a documentation of completion of the program.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Bill. 220322.
Approving Office and Youth and Family Services Detention Contract, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Contract for the fiscal year 22 through 23 with Jefferson County Juvenile Court, Steubenville, Ohio, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here's Director Browning.
This is for additional detention beds. Unfortunately, it's in Ohio, but given the lack of detention beds throughout the state, 22 other counties do contract with this facility for Pennsylvania youth.
And it really isn't just the lack of beds, it's the lack of staffing.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220323.
Approving an Agreement Between Human Services and United Neighborhood Centers, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve an agreement between Lackawanna County Department of Human Services and the United Neighborhood Centers for the Super NLOFA Continuum of Care for the fiscal year 21 through 22, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Browning.
The continuum of care is a collaborative effort of agencies and social service providers to provide services to prevent homeless, and this is just our annual share of that, which is, I believe, 6,000. We share that with the city of Scranton.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 220324.
Mr. Chairman, this is approving a human services professional services contract, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Professional Services Contract with Richard Gold LLC for the fiscal year 22 through 23, for the CDC grant, closing the gap with social determinants of health accelerator plans, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Finally, one more time, here is Director Browning.
So, this is a grant to help us plan to address social determinants of health in our community, such as access to healthcare because of either poverty, built environment, et cetera. This grant allows us to plan and coordinate data. The contract specifically with Mr. Gold is to address some of the confidentiality and HIPAA issues on that will exist because of sharing data.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thanks, Bill, thank you.
Resolution 220310.
Approving a Consulting Services Amended Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a Consulting Services Amended Agreement with John Foley, a 417 Schoolside Drive troop, for an additional six months, with an option to extend at $50 an hour, 15 hours per week, adopted the regular meaning of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 7th, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Taxes Assessment, Mr. Pat Topen.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We believe the extension is necessary in that Mr. Foley still has approximately 145 cases that arose from his tenure while he was Director of Assessments. By way of comparison, we've had 56 new cases since March, since I was appointed. Mr. Foley works exclusively with our lead solicitor, Bridget Carrie, on these cases, and after speaking with her, I believe the extension is necessary.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Resolution 220325.
Approving an Office of Drug and Alcohol Agreement, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Lackawanna, Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs Provider Agreement with Huntington Creek Recovery Center for the Fiscal Year 22 through 23, adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Drug and Alcohol Treatment, Ms. Barb Dirk.
Good morning, Barb.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm simply here to ask your support of my office entering into a contract with Huntington Creek, which is an adolescent drug and alcohol facility. It will treat both men and women. It's a provider that is in the Poconos that we have worked with in the past, but they've never taken county funding or medical assistance, and they're willing to do so now. It is greatly needed for us to enter into this contract. We have very few places to send adolescents at this point for drug and alcohol treatment.
Great job.
Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Barb?
I'm glad you found them, and I'm glad they're willing to take our, our money.
Absolutely, and the rate isn't terrible. It's a little bit higher than our, our adult rates, but at this point, you know, we need places that are close enough. They do provide transportation, they provide schooling for individuals who are there. It's meant to be a longer-term program, so we're, we're really excited about it.
Great. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 220326.
Approving an amended Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance in the City of Carbonell. Whereas the General Assembly of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has an active legislation known as Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistant Grant, LURDA, Act 76 of 1977, which authorizes ta, local taxing authorities to provide for a tax exemption for a certain deteriorated industrial, commercial, and other business property. Whereas pursuant to the LURDA statute, the City of Carbonell adopted ordinance number six of 2005, September 14, 2005, and held hearings to define the boundaries of the deteriorated area within the borough in accordance with the procedure set forth in the LURDA statute. And whereas the City of Carbonell did extend LURDA exemption to that certain real property located 25 South Main Street, City of Carbonell, Lackawanna County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, more specific, more particularly identified as tax parcel 05521-020-040 and 05521-020-0401 by motion approved by City Council on November 15, 2021. And whereas the Carbonell Area School District did accept LURDA exemption to the property herein set forth by motion at their public meeting held on October 17, 2022. And whereas the Board of Commissioners did previously approve a LURDA for this property by resolution on November 16, 2022. However, the resolution contained an incorrect start date, which this resolution corrects. And whereas certain improved land located in the City of Carbonell, Lackawanna County, owned by the Carbonell Grand Hotel RE LLC, located 25 South Main Street, City of Carbonell, Lackawanna County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, more particularly identified as tax parcels 05521-020-40, 40, 0, 040, and where, and 5521-020-0401 is within this area designated for the City of Carbonell as a deteriorated property, and set forth and in the resolution is therefore entitled to an exemption for municipal real estate taxes under the LURDA for a period of 10 years. Now therefore, be it resolved by Lackawanna County and the Board of Commissioners as follows: The exemption amount, the amount to be exempt shall be limited to that portion of the additional assessment attributable to the actual cost of improvements. The exemption shall be limited to that improvement for which the exemption shall be requested in the manner set forth below, and for which a separate assessment has been made by the Lackawanna County Board of Assessment Appeals. The exemption schedule for a period of 10 years beginning on January 1, 2022, the same shall be exempt from real property taxes otherwise payable to the County of Lackawanna as a result of the increase in the tax assessment of the Carbonell Grand Hotel RE LLC attributed only to the cost improvements constructed thereon in accordance to the following schedule: Year 2022 is 60%, 23 is 55%, 24 is 50%, year 2025 is 45%, 2026 is 40%, 2027 is 35%, 2028 is 30%, 2029 is 25%, 2030 is 20%, and 2031 is 15%. The provisions of this resolution shall expire for the real estate on December 31, 2031, unless extended by resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, duly adopted, and the applicant for tax abatement must have an occupancy permit to be eligible for tax abatement treatment hereunder. There shall be no exempt, no tax exemption available hereunder which would exceed the maximum exemption of 100% for a period of 10 years. Section 9, if any section clause provision or portion of this resolution shall be held invalid, unconstitutional by any court of competence jurisdiction shall, such decision shall not affect any other section clause provision or portion of this resolution so long as it remains legally enforceable minus the invalid portion. The City of Carbonell, Lackawanna County, and the Carbonell Area School District reserve the right to amend this resolution from time to time as it's, as it shall deem advisable in the best interest of the promotion of the purposes and intent of this resolution and the effective administration thereof. Section 10, the effective date this resolution shall be in full first, full force, in effect upon adoption and enactment. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Chief Solicitor, Mr. Frank Ruggiero.
Good morning again. Thank you, Chief Jeffers. As indicated, this resolution seeks to simply modify the prior resolution adopted on November 16 relative to the commencement or start date of the LURDA, rather than starting in 2023, the amended resolution has it starting in 2022 and continuing out for a 10-year period in accordance with our LURDA until its expiration in 2031. It also picks up where the LURDA would have picked up in the other municipalities. That's why year one starts with a 60% abatement and not a full 100% abatement. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, well, we, we've talked about this.
We have, yes, we have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, resolution 220327.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution approving this Deputy Sheriff's Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Lackawanna County Collective and the Lackawanna County Deputy Sheriff's Association's proposed collective bargaining agreement for 2022 through 2026 as attached here too, adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
This is a resolution that we talked about earlier, and because of an issue that has arisen, which we do not believe is going to impact it, if Mr. Ruggiero would like to speak on that, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to table it.
I'll second that motion.
On the question, Mr. Ruggiero?
Sure. The tabling of the motion is certainly, well, is being done as a courtesy to the Deputy Sheriff's Association, so that, as indicated, perhaps they can go back and, and do whatever they may need to do internally. Notwithstanding the same, I can represent that it's Labor Council's position, and it's the solicitor's position, that the contract had been properly ratified. So when we come back here for our next meeting, it'll be back before the Commissioners, and I would anticipate that the Commissioners, in accordance with what's occurred and, and what the, the advice is from both Labor Council and the Solicitors Office, to simply ratify the contract.
Okay, thank you.
You need a vote on your motion.
Okay, my motion will, I'll entertain a, a vote.
I second it. So all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Resolution 220328.
Entering into a Homeland Security Grant Agreement, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Emergency Management and the Northeast Pennsylvania Regional Counterterrorism Task Force for the United States Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $898,918 to commence September 1, 2022 to December 29, 2025, adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Emergency Services, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Tom.
This is a grant agreement with the State Homeland Security Grant Program. This is 100% federally funded through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, through Pima, and then the Northeast Pennsylvania Regional Counterterrorism Task Force, which I sit on the Executive Board. This grant helps purchase equipment, training, maintenance that all 10 counties within the task force share for combating terrorism and any other catastrophic event that may happen.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220329.
Accepting the quote from Kronos UKG, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby accept, or is hereby approve the Kronos U G K renewal quotes for the time and attendance system, support services to cost $19,237.27, and timekeeping renewal quote to cost $48,959.84, adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Director of the Budget, Ms. Mary Jo Brannahan.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
These are just the two renewal contracts. One is for our software renewal, and that term runs from December 29, 22, through December 28, 23. And the second one is for our equipment, which is the time clocks you see on the walls in all the buildings, and that quote is for February 24, 23, through February 23, 24.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you.
Resolution 220330.
Entering into an agreement with Verizon, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Verizon, Pennsylvania LLC and Verizon North LLC for Lackawanna County to place and maintain cables, wire, and other equipment on poles and in conduits owned and controlled by Verizon, adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of IT, Mr. Mike Brown.
Hey, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This agreement with Verizon is going to help us extend our footprint and connect to our buildings in a more efficient manner, instead of trying to work out other means of trying to get connectivity, and especially to help out with our project to connect with fiber from our building here to 911.
Great. Entertain a motion to approve.
Aye. Or motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 220331.
Accepting fiber quotes from Icon Technologies, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby accept the quotes from Icon Technologies for a fiber link at McDade Park to cost $11,450.61, and a 10-gig link from the courthouse to the Lackawanna County Government Center to cost $37,984. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman here once again is Director Brown.
Mr. Brown.
So I'll start with the park first. As we're starting the project of providing cameras in the park, that cost is to provide connectivity into the coal mines, so this way we can actually see when anyone's down there and to ensure safety. The second project, which is to connect the courthouse, currently right now, we do not have fiber going into the courthouse, and they are, they are in desperate need of additional services. This 10-gig link will give them the service they need and actually help them with their video conferencing.
Perfect. Thank you, Michael. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 220332.
Accepting a quote from CDW, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby accept a quote from CDW for subscription licenses, software fiber, switchers, switches imports for a total of $337,000. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Brown.
Mr. Brown.
So this project, which is funded by the ARPA dollars, is to provide connectivity to our new Department of Health and Human Services building on Franklin Avenue. This will also provide us with a backup location for internet services for the, for the county, so this way, if we should ever have a problem here, we can relay back from that location.
Good job, Mike. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Excuse me one minute.
Anyone from the public?
We'll take a short recess.
No.
No one from the public.
There's nobody?
Commissioners, now start with Commissioners, other business.
Okay, Commissioners, other business. Chris?
Let's remember December 7, 1941, our ancestors, grandparents, aunts, uncles, all the people that fought and lost their lives and helped protect our country, so try never to forget. We honor those that serve today and all that serve, so thank you for your service. And since Dave and Mary Jo are here again, I just want to thank them again for their hard work on our budget. As a conservative commissioner, you know, I, it was very important to me to come with, to come up with a balanced budget, so I appreciate all the hard work, and along with our fellow, my fellow commissioners to help approve that, so I think that was very, very important. And as the holidays approach, just enjoy responsibly and safely.
We'll be back before the holiday. I think our next meeting's on the 21st, right?
Yeah, but the Christmas party starts.
The Christmas party starts.
Oh, I know. Jeffers won't let me have one here, so it's his fault, but I just want to second what Chris said. I'm so impressed with Dave Bolzoni and Mary Jo in our revenue department for the work that they did and the magic, basically, that they, that they had to come up with in order to reduce that eight and a half million dollar deficit. I don't know how you, how you did it. I mean, I know it because he sent me a memo, but it was impressive nonetheless.
Line by line.
Line by, I mean, it, it was. You came, Dave came in in the middle of the budget season, and you still, like, really did an amazing, amazing job. And I know I've told you this in person, but I think I, I wanted to say it publicly, that you guys really are doing an excellent, excellent job on behalf of the county residents. Anything from you?
Yeah, just the same thing about the, the budget. I mean, you know, we didn't get a lot of press on balancing a budget and, you know, tax increase, but it's, it's the first time it was really done without a surplus, using the surplus, and then thank Mary.
No ARP funds either.
No, no ARP funds either. Mary Jo and Brannahan, Budget Director, and Dave Bolzoni, new CFO, and they spent a lot of time working on it, and they did a great job, and
It's impressive.
And we're just really happy about it. And that's it. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.[1761.63][1761.63]